Buenas noches, este mensaje será repetido en español enseguida. Good evening, welcome to tonight's board meeting. Before we get started, I'd like to provide a brief overview of the order of this meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will dedicate thirty minutes to public comments. So if you'd like to speak and participate in public comments, please raise your hand now. At the end of the meeting, there will be another and final opportunity for addition of public comments. So if you do not raise your hand now, you may have to wait until the end of the meeting. To participate in public comments, you can raise your hand by clicking on the Participants button on the bottom of your screen and selecting Raise Your Hand. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. Once again, if you wait to raise your hand until public comment period starts, you will not be able to speak during this first call and will have to wait until the end. When called upon, you will be prompted to panelists. This means that you will appear on screen. So if you do not want to be on camera, please disable the camera on your end. The board president will usually call students first. So if you are a student who wishes to speak tonight, please write "student" at the end of your name. The board president will determine to set tonight's time to speaking time to one, two, or three minutes per speaker. And on an individual basis, pass a discretion to allow extra time for those who need translation or have other speeches. When your time has elapsed, you will see Vice President Brown hold up a sign letting you know you have fifteen seconds left, but you are still speaking. Please finish your sentence, but try not to speak beyond your time. Thank you. Voy a proporcionar un breve resumen sobre esta reunión después de unos procedimientos preliminares. Un periodo de media hora, treinta minutos será dedicado a comentarios de parte del público. Si desea participar en un comentario público, por favor levante la mano ya, ya que si se espera, tendrá, si se espera que el periodo comience, tendrá que esperarse hasta la segunda llamada, que usualmente es después de las diez de la noche. Para comentar por videoconferencia, haga clic en el botón Participantes abajo de su pantalla y seleccione el botón Levantar la mano o Raise Your Hand. Para participar a través de teléfono, puede levantar la mano presionando este icono. Usualmente, el presidente llamará a los estudiantes primero. Si hay estudiantes que desean participar esta noche, por favor de indicar que son estudiantes al escribir estudiantes después de su nombre. El presidente otorgará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador. Lo otorgará tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o otras adaptaciones especiales. Cuando haya transcurrido su tiempo, Vice Presidente Brown levantará un signo indicando que le faltan quince segundos. Por favor, de terminar su oración, pero trate de no se repasar de su tiempo. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Charles. Ms. Charles, our student director, Mascherini Swan, is a participant. Can you promote her?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September eighth meeting of the Berkeley School Board. As Ms. Charles just noted, if you'd like to make public comment, now is the time to raise your hand. Once we start the public comment period, it'll be too late to raise your hand for that public comment period. You'll be able to speak in the public comment period at the end of our meeting. But if you want to speak tonight, I mean, at the first public comment period, now is the time to raise your hand. Ms. Charles, can you please call the roll?
Yeah, Student Director Angela Mascherini Swan, are you with us?
Present.
Director Ana Vasudev.
Present.
Director Laura Babbitt.
Here.
Director Julie Simon.
Here.
Vice President Peta Bieja Brown.
Present.
President.
Present, thank you. Sorry about that, Director Mascherini Swan, but we're glad you made it here. All right, now we will, sorry, approve the meeting agenda for tonight. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm moved.
Motion, my Director Vasudev, is there a second?
Director, or President Alper, I actually, there at eleven point four, I have to recuse.
Okay.
So I don't know if we can separate or if I just recuse from the whole item.
No, let's, let's, we'll move item eleven point four to action, to the action calendar. Okay, with that change.
May I jump in for just one second? There are two items on consent, in fact, that we will ask to be removed from tonight's agenda.
Okay.
Those are items eleven point two one and eleven point two two. There were not materials loaded in time for this evening's meeting. And so we'll be sure to make sure that that information is accessible to the public when we come back in two weeks on those items.
Okay, so we're pulling item eleven point two one altogether. We're pulling item eleven point two two altogether and removing item eleven point four to action, which someone, please remind me to make sure that we actually approve. Item eleven point four, we can do that right after we approve the consent calendar. Okay, with that, Director Vasudev, is that your motion with all those changes?
Finally, Director.
It was Director, it was.
Oh, sorry, Vice President Brown.
Okay, we just want to make sure the minutes reflect what's going on up here.
You were throwing your voice, okay. Vice President Brown made the motion. Is there a second?
I can second.
Oh, okay, now you're gonna second, okay, Director Mascherini is seconding it. Ms. Charles, can you please call the roll?
Director Mascherini Swan.
Yes.
Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Simon.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. So now we have our agenda. Again, this is the time to raise your hand. Excuse me, if you would like to give public comment. Now I'll turn it over to Vice President Brown for the report on closed session and then we'll go to public comment. And it looks like everybody, sorry, it looks like we're gonna be able to give each public commenter two minutes tonight. Go ahead, Vice President Brown, please.
Thank you. The report from closed session, item three point one point one was moved by Director Sinai, seconded by Director Vasudev, and the motion passed five to zero. Item three point two point one, the board provided direction, and this is the notes from closed session.
All right, thank you, Vice President Brown.
Can you mention who made the motion and second?
Yes, ma'am. The motion was made by Director Sinai and seconded by Director Vasudev.
Thank you.
Item three point one point one.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're gonna move to public comment. And the people have their hands raised now are the ones who will give public comment in this period. And if you'd like to give public comment at the end of the meeting, you'll be able to do so. Those of you in the audience can't see are the list that we can see, but the, just as a marker, the last public speaker will be Suzanne Alberga. And the first one, well, let's see, we'll call our students first. I see two students with an S, or two people with an S. Is it okay, Ms. Charles, if we, let me, the students will be coming up soon, but just because it's a little bit hard sometimes to pull people out of order, it'll just be a few minutes. So let's just go in the order that we have people in on the list. The first speaker is Gladys Stout, followed by Stephanie Shadell, and then the students will be coming up after that. Go ahead. Ms. Akambo Stout. And everybody has two minutes, and Vice President Brown will be keeping the time. Gladys.
Hello, good evening. Good evening, Directors of the BUSD School Board and Superintendent Stevens. I'm here tonight on behalf of Latinos Unidos of Berkeley. We are here to advocate for Agenda Item thirteen point two to approve the one-time transfer for Fund Twenty to COVID Response Expenses. This transfer will allow for funding of important items that serve all vulnerable students. We understand that the pandemic has caused additional expenses for school districts. However, we want to be sure that the district funds the important non-COVID-related expenses on the agenda tonight, such as PICA, Latino Family Literacy Project, another important educational-related expenses. In addition to keeping your eyes on all the COVID-related expenses, we are asking you tonight, Board of Directors, to keep your eyes on our vulnerable students since COVID-related learning loss will only further widen our achievement gaps. Please approve Agenda Item thirteen point two tonight. We also want to thank the district for listening and bringing forward these items. We are looking forward to the implementation of the plans, programs, and contracts to help improve the academic performance of our Latinx students. We're also excited to hear more about how the district plans on celebrating Latinx Heritage Month, which starts on September fifteenth, and hope all Board Directors will partake in festivities for Latinx Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Next, we have Stephanie Shadell, followed by Neil. Ms. Charles, sorry. There we go.
Are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hi there, Board, Student Director and Assistant Superintendents and Superintendent. My name is Stephanie Shadell, and I am a teacher in CAS in Berkeley High, as well as the Wellness Coordinator. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of CAS, as well as the other two small learning communities, AAMS and AHA, specifically to ask the board to lift the universal ban on field trips for Berkeley High students. I've submitted a letter just this evening to all of you that is a detailed and thoughtful proposal about why and how we can do this, modified versions of our annual retreats for our students. And we're asking you to approve the proposal to allow day-long retreats for this fall with a revisit about possible overnight retreats in the spring. Why does this feel so important? We need more chances to support our students' social and emotional well-being, which, of course, mental health and medical professionals have continuously told us is the reason we need to be back in school full-time. So we are back in school full-time. Our students are proving themselves to be caring, concerned members of a collective community, abiding by the mask mandates, coming to school, and they seem genuinely and generally pretty thrilled to be there. But they are clamoring to also have these outdoor experiences together. And retreats have been a core part of the small learning communities for a very long time. The current class of twenty-two has never had a retreat because theirs was right after we shut down in March twenty twenty twenty. And so I want to, I want to remind the board that we are already in daily contact in close quarters and classrooms across Berkeley High. And as I've said, students are showing their commitment to keeping themselves and each other safe. They deserve, and we teachers deserve, to spend time with them outdoors, where the risk of COVID is, of course, lower, and the chances for community connection and growth are exponential. So my request is that if the board is not prepared to approve our proposal tonight, that it be added to the agenda for September twenty-second. And I thank you for considering our students as whole people and not just the academic learning, but the social, emotional as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shadell. Appreciate it. Next, we have Neil, followed by Emmy Sampson-Eaves.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. My name is Neil Juckup, and I'm coming as a parent of two children, a third grader and a kindergartner at Washington Elementary. And I'm coming on behalf of all the parents and families in our elementary schools in the district. Thank you for having me, Directors and staff of BUSD. I appreciate your time. I'm here tonight to ask that the district approved a substitute teacher, a full-time substitute teacher for each elementary school in the district. The reasoning is as follows. Prior to COVID, if there was a teacher who was out sick and the district couldn't provide a substitute, the fallback was to split the kids so that some kids might go into a couple different classes and instruction could be continued. My understanding is that when we went back to school in person late last year, a full-time substitute was provided for each school. This is because the kids couldn't be split into different classrooms because of the requirements that they maintain, their social groups, in the form of classes. Well, this year, my understanding from talking to our principals that those dedicated substitute teachers for each school have not been continued. But we're still under the same kind of constraints. We're still under the constraints where if one of our nineteen-plus classroom teachers or our staff teachers for art or science is out sick, there's no guarantee that we'll be able to find a substitute teacher that we had before with the dedicated substitute teachers for each school. And if that happens, there's no choice but to send those kids home because, unlike pre-COVID, the kids can't be split among other classrooms. And this is an issue for every elementary school in our district. Now, I know this board has courageously told parents that they're gonna try to have kids do in-person learning this year. I think a really important step towards that is making sure that over the long term, our teachers can have the flexibility in case they're sick or can't attend class, and yet we can still keep the kids in the classroom. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Neil. Appreciate you being here. Okay, next, we have Emmy Sampson-Eaves, followed by Lauren Meckerlein.
Hi, before I begin, please know that this is a six-minute story that my classmates will be continuing so that you understand the full story. My name is Emmy Sampson. I'm a senior at BHS, and the president of BHS stopped harassing. Last Friday, my classmate was pulled out of class, not once, but twice, by two separate vice principals. The first vice principal, to their credit, asked for the student's side of the story. The vice president explained that they wanted BHS to be a safe space for all and asked if my classmate would like to report anything, to which they responded that they had nothing to report. The administrator then sent the student to lunch, which seemed like the last of it. Unfortunately, this wasn't the case. During sixth period of the same day, my classmate was called out of class again by yet another vice principal that they had never met before. When they walked into their office, all that was on the desk was a legal pad and a pen. This administrator asked them, "Do you know who I am?", to which the student replied, "No." The administrator then explained who they were. They told the student that they were made aware of a sexual assault, and therefore, the student needed to make a report. This was left intentionally vague in an attempt to keep the student unsure of where these claims were coming from. The student denied that they had any information to share. The administrator continued to pressure the student, insisting that they had something to report, which they needed to do promptly. My classmate repeated over and over again, "I have nothing to report." The vice president, the vice principal, continued to pressure the student to make a report. Eventually, it became evident that they were not going to change their mind, at which point the administrator stated that the student could be labeled with bullying and harassment towards another student if they didn't make a report. So let's sit with this for a minute. A student has now been removed from not one, but two classes in one day for reasons that they aren't clear on. Thank you.
Thank you, Emmy. And I assume that, wait, stay there for one second, are Lauren and Abigail the other two students?
Yes, those are the other two students.
Is that the order that Lauren is going next?
Yes, please.
Okay, Lauren, Lauren, and then Abigail will follow Lauren. Thank you, Emmy. Lauren, yeah, are you there? You're on mute. There you are.
Sorry, where? Having some technical issues.
Are you all in the same room, maybe?
An active king can be a good king.
Wait. Maybe turn off the sound on all the computers except the one. We'll give them a minute to figure it out. Why don't we, why don't we go to, well, is that, I don't know how we get, we'll give, we'll give the students a minute to figure out their technology, and we'll skip over Abigail and go to Angela Coppola. Is Coppola, oh, wait.
Hi, sorry, we're ready now.
Oh, you're back, okay.
We're just having technical difficulties.
That's fine. Are you ready now, though, Lauren?
Sorry about that. Okay. Okay. Hello, my name is Lauren Meckerlein. I'm a senior at Berkeley High, and I will be continuing this story. As confusing as this was at the moment, the reason why revealed itself. This administrator explained how they heard that my classmate had told an alleged sexual assaulter to go into independent study, also known as IS. We want to put emphasis on one word, "told." This story, this word implies that the student demanded or forced another student to go into IS. This was not the case. The student, who was the alleged assaulter, had, in fact, admitted to multiple cases of sexual harm towards his peers and was seeking advice on how to repair the harm he had caused. Prior to the school year, as part of making amends, he asked girls he had harmed, how he could make it better. The student who caused the harm was asking for directions. Independent study was an agreed-upon remedy, not with force or coercion, but rather a restorative practice lens mediated by students. Remember, the administrator stated, unless you report, this could be considered bullying and harassment. That one line revealed the true intentions of this conversation, which was to attempt to coerce and manipulate a student into filing a Title IX report, even though they had now told the school two times in one day that they had nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Is Abigail with you? Or is she in a separate Zoom?
I see my time to Abby.
Okay, is that, okay, Abby, so, all right, Ms. Charles, can you go to Abigail Lammerow? There you are.
Hello, my name is Abby Lammerow, and I am a senior at Berkeley.
Oh, Abby, you muted yourself.
Whatever, it's fine. My name is Abby Lammerow, and I am a senior at Berkeley High School. I will now be completing my story. While attempting to manipulate me into writing a report, an administrator told me that, quote, "All students have the right to an education." He was speaking about the student who he claimed was bullied and harassed. And he's right. All students do have the right to an education. But as we mentioned before, the student who caused harm wanted to do this as a part of restorative action. This leads me to ask, what about my right to an education? Or others in my class he assaulted? Where was my right to an education when the administration pulled me out of two classes, two times in one day, to attempt to force me into writing a report, even though I clearly stated that I had nothing to report? I will be filing a complaint against BUSD, the system that did not train this administrator properly and forever chooses the rights of perpetrators of sexual harm over the rights of people who are harmed. Because there's no appropriate training for administrators on trauma-informed practices, I hope that once these reports are submitted, they get addressed immediately and promptly. A teacher, Ms. Coppola, spoke directly to the administrator in my story. But how messed up is that? That the only way accountability happens at BUSD is when students, teachers, or parents advocate and intervene against you. I love Ms. Coppola for doing that, but it isn't her job to fill the gap that you leave for teachers to fill year after year. Ms. Coppola has had to train herself to be an advocate for survivors when she is supposed to be a history teacher. This is all a great reminder about our history within BUSD. On Friday, it will be one year and seven months ago that Berkeley High School had our sexual harm walkout. From this came many demands. Here are all those that have yet to be met. Number one, all BUSD staff be regularly trained on consent and reporting, including trauma-informed training, so that teachers and other staff are first contact for students and are able to properly support survivors. All I can say here is the lack of the trauma-enforced practices regarding students who may have been harmed, given my story, is enough to choke this meeting silent. Number two, consent at K through twelve. This promise happens every year, and it is a joke. It is now September of my senior year, and the only education I have ever received is what Berkeley High School Stop Harassing has brought to classrooms. Where is the contract? When is the start date? And where is the budget line item? Number three, enough funding and support to keep and retain a Title IX coordinator, which means having enough data collection tools, a full-time competent administrative help, and access to additional resources as needed to prevent and address the backlog of cases. Where is the budget item that would support these in question and demonstrate answers?
Ms. Lammerow, if you could finish up soon, that'd be great.
I will, just wait. Number four, continue to be open, ongoing dialogue, and show this by following through on transparency through its district sexual harm advisory committee, and that includes students, teachers, and parents. And number five, add a full-time Title IX case manager for Berkeley High School whose sole purpose is working with survivors of harm, discrimination, bullying, and mental health issues. Where is this FTE who is trauma-trained and has experience on sexual harm in your budget? Seventeen months after the walkout, Superintendent Stevens, you talk a good game, but it's been enough with words. We expect to be informed of exact contracts, names, actual timelines, all information pertaining to the seven demands made in two thousand and nineteen. I don't want to hear about what is being discussed. We want to hear about tangible, meaningful steps with the funding to support them fully. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you to all the students who came out. Next, we have, we have four more speakers left in this public comment period with two minutes each. Next, we have Angela Coppola, followed by Rebecca Levinson, Sarah Bowles, and Rachel Oster. Ms. Coppola, you're up. And Vice President Brown is keeping track of the time.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, go ahead.
Okay, hi. So I did speak with the administrator in question, Abby's story, and this is an administrator of good faith who wants to write by our students. None of us come to campus every day and say, hey, I want to hurt a student today. We're all here to serve the kids. And this just really goes to show that someone who's trying to do the right thing did not, in fact, be the right thing, and this training is really important. And we need training that addresses the power differentials because sexual harassment is really about, you know, power. And the power an administrator has over a student, the power a teacher has over a student, in trying to compel them to report. Now, a big Berkeley side article dropped today that showed that your Title IX office is in shambles and has been for a while. So Brett, this time last year, you were accusing me of telling kids not to report when Ms. Maje and I emailed you and said, you know, kids don't feel comfortable reporting because you don't have a great track record. And your response was to accuse me of breaking the law. So I'll take an apology from you anytime. We handled you the Bissell case on a silver platter. He no longer works at Berkeley High. You're welcome. So we need to do better by these kids. I trust that everyone here cares about the kids. And we need better training to deal with all these things, which is something that you've heard forever and ever and ever. Amen. So let me just check real quick. Yeah, and you've been gaslighting and re-traumatizing our kids by making them report over and over again. And now it's out that you're not keeping those reports. So maybe you need to listen to the people of conscience and the moral imagination to work around the crappy system you've given us about how to move forward and restore trust between students and the adults that serve them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Coppola. Rebecca Levinson, followed by Sarah Bowles, and then, oh, I think Sarah Bowles might be our last speaker, Rebecca Levinson? There you are. There you are.
Evening. It's a hard night, isn't it? Um, so my name is Rebecca Levinson. I've been working with students for seven years, and I really hope to never, ever come to another school board meeting. But here we are. And, you know, tonight, we're talking about budget. And we're talking about real things that make a difference. You know, one of the things that we know is a green dot makes a difference, although I don't see that as a line item in our budget. Why is that? You know, it's so interesting that students of their own accord, I think because we have created an environment where folks can talk about these issues, because the green dot are actually working on their own restorative plans because there's nobody to do it with them within our own district. And here we are, trying to blow that up, trying to blow up students who are trying to think about, how do they continue to move forward together? Right? And so while I am thinking about Green Dot, I'm also wanting to appreciate the fact that I know Coaching Boys Indemn was funded. So I want to, I want to give a shout-out about that. But the other thing that I want to say is that the article that dropped today is something for all of you to stop and think about. I don't believe we should have anything related to Title IX within BUSD. It's too corrupt. It's too toxic. It's been too long. It's over and over again, and it has hurt students year after year after year. The only way you get accountability is if your liability is not the first. The only way you get accountability is if your liability is not the first thing and the foremost thing in the room, but the person that is standing in front of you saying, this happened to me and I'm hurting. And how many times have you heard the same thing? Since 2014, you've heard the same thing. And it's been minimized, it's been flipped upside down, it's been talked away, wished away, what have you. But in fact, I think the liability issues for the school district versus the needs of the students are in such deep counterforces. Until we have something that shifts and has accountability on the outside, just like with teacher training, are you actually going to look and hear from the teachers when they get trained? Is what you're presenting doing something for them?
Thank you.
Administrator, I'm not quite done. It's been seven years. I get one more sentence.
Okay, one more sentence.
How is it possible that an administrator would harass a child coming in around forcing them to disclose something they, they had no interest in talking to them about? And, and how, how do you let that keep happening? Because that should be the first thing you get trained on if you have that kind of power in a school district.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Our last speaker of this period would be Sarah Bowles. Ms. Bowles, you're, you're, yeah, you're.
Hey, wow, I'm really impressed by the young woman who spoke. They made some solid recommendations that I support and it sounds like it's long past time to implement them. However, I had a super basic question that when you get to the necessity of fund transfers for contract tracing, I don't understand, a lot of people I know don't understand, why is it that the city of Berkeley's Public Health Department isn't responsible for contact tracing in schools? So I just don't get why our kids are exempt from receiving the benefit of city contact tracing just because they go to school. At the beginning of the pandemic, the city seconded dozens of employees to contact tracing, and you'd think that they would have the capacity to take this on for the district. So I do understand the CDPH requirements you're testing in school. What I just don't understand, and I'm hoping you can explain to the public, is what bylaw or public health directed enabled the city to recuse itself from contact tracing for people under 18? Like if there was a measles outbreak, like they'd be responsible for doing that kind of work. So I don't understand why you have to keep, you know, as your responsibilities for this increase, why it falls in your lap and not theirs? So if you could explain that, that would be great. Or, and if the city could actually explain that would be really helpful because it sounds unduly burdensome for you to essentially duplicate their, their jobs.
We'll send you the link to the city council meetings. No, thank you, Ms. Bowles. Well, I think maybe Dr. Stevens will be able to address, address that or talk about the, what we're doing with the city and vice versa during the presentation about the update on reopening. But thank you for being here. Thank you for that comment. Okay, that concludes the public comment period, and now we will move on to union comments. We have one recorded comment from the president of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. If you're here for a union comment, if you could raise your hand now, that would be great. In the meantime, Ms. Charis, can you play President Meyer's speech?
Hello, Berkeley Unified School Board and Dr. Stevens. I am Matt Meyer, the president of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. We are thrilled to be open, fully in person. After four weeks back to school at all levels, we have been able to better understand the impact of the Delta variant on our school sites. Fortunately, in California, we have scientifically informed health guidance to keep our students and staff as safe as possible. Unfortunately, having the right guidance and implementing that policy are two different things. The California Department of Public Health had set up health guidelines under assumptions that just aren't true with Delta. This makes sense. They were developed in early summer when positive COVID cases were few and far between. It was going to be a lot easier to pull these things off when you did not have as many COVID cases. The reality is that COVID is hitting our sites hard. I'll be frank, the current workload conditions on BUSD staff, administrators, and teachers are just not sustainable. BUSD has around three to five positive COVID cases a day. Each of these cases is at a different site with its own set of contacts. Each case brings about eight hours of work to do the necessary contact tracing interviews and communication with families as dictated by the Health Department, tax, plus friends, extracurriculars, and multiple adults that may have been in the room with them. Each student needs to be individually flagged to the infinite campus. Each elementary case requires a massive amount of tracking and testing in order to keep students on modified quarantine. This often falls to the administrator. Principals have become site COVID managers, having to stop everything when a positive COVID case at their schools is reported. Many times, this means having to work late into the night or on the weekends just to make sure the communication goes out before the next day. Much of the work of running the school has taken a backseat to complying with the health guidance to keep students in school and not on a 10-day quarantine. Eventually, scheduled IEPs will need to be delayed, teacher evaluations will be put on hold, maintenance issues will go unresolved, and the ability to lead a site will be compromised because an administrator will not be physically and mentally available. Our teachers are receiving critical information about positive cases too late because of lack of staffing and are tasked with fielding the many questions parents have, even when they don't have complete information. At first, we were thinking about the amount of staff that takes to test all of our students and staff. Now we are realizing that once there are more than a couple COVID cases a day, it is the contact tracing and student tracking that needs to be staffed up. Staff, like students, are forced to stay home with a cold until a negative test is given by a healthcare provider. We used to wait up the day. Now we leave midday. We have never seen a sub shortage like we have now. Site TSAs are being pulled from their critical work supporting students to subclasses. At secondary schools, teachers are losing their prep periods, which will lead to major burnout over time. Subs do not want to work at many sites in many different classrooms for obvious reasons. We need subs that are assigned to sites like we had last spring that can independently fill vacancies which are occurring daily. Other districts have had to close their entire school systems because they cannot resolve these issues. Most days, we can fill a bit more than half of our vacancies, leaving our sites scrambling for coverage. We are sounding the alarm now so we can collectively figure out ways to manage this crisis and stay focused on teaching and learning. BUSD staff at all levels have the same goal. Keep our students in school as much as possible. But without more support staff to keep the district in compliance with CDPH and county guidelines, it will be an uphill battle. Thank you.
Thank you, President Meyer. I don't see any other union representatives here. Are there any committee? Committee representatives? No? All right, then, then it's time for board member and superintendent comments. So I'll turn it over to my colleagues for board member comments. Would anybody like to go first? I'm going to call on somebody. Director Sinai, do you want to go first?
I'd love to go first.
Thank you.
I just want to start off by thanking the public comment and thanking the students for coming out and representing their, their issues today. I hope that Superintendent Stevens and Associate Superintendent Aurelia, that you guys can follow up on what happened and what necessary, you know, next steps on that would be. I also want to thank President Alper for the blog that he recently drafted describing the challenges and the heavy lift that school districts are carrying with the COVID contact tracing and testing. Very straight and to the point, and if anybody hasn't seen it, they can go to, I think, President Alper's Twitter or Facebook or place and see it. But, you know, I was in a meeting recently and talking across the county about how, you know, all of our schools and our districts have become newly minted public health entities. When really what our focus is, as, as President Meyer said, is teaching and learning. So I, I look forward to hearing what partnerships we are doing with the city. And I know that this is not an issue that's unique to BUSD. Districts all across the state are in the same boat where we are becoming public health entities while we're trying to run classrooms. And we need more help. And so I appreciate your appeal to the state, President Alper, for, you know, needing to step up and really help our districts. I did hear an interesting recommendation when I was with a community meeting yesterday, which I hadn't really thought about, and I just want to throw it out there. Not a solution, but more of like, how do we engage our youth and our students in our response to COVID, and particularly, I'm thinking at Berkeley High and our AMPS, you know, small learning program, and how we can engage our young people in even looking at data, looking at charts, looking at COVID as a public health issue. And, you know, coming up with some of the best messaging around vaccinations and testing is coming from our young people in our community. So anything that the board or that we can do to help support our, our teachers and our staff and our young people to empower, you know, their ability to message during this pandemic or to engage in any of the programming and solutions that we're doing, I would love to be able to strategize on that because I think we have a wealth of great energy and ideas from our young people. And there might be some exciting solutions coming from there. And then lastly, I just want to remind folks that I've got my open office hours this coming Friday from 1:30 to 3:00 at Cafe Leila on San Pablo, across from the Berkeley Adult School. Please come, share your ideas, share your thoughts, share your concerns, share your worries. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sinai. Who's next?
I can go.
Great, Director Muscarino Swan.
Um, thank you for your comments, Director Sinai. I'd also like to voice my support for the students and teachers and parents who spoke in, during the public comment session for illuminating a really important issue that I think has been largely ignored, honestly, during this pandemic, which I recognize is because the district has been dealing with a lot of really important logistics surrounding the transition to on-person school and dealing with COVID and ensuring our students' safety. But I think it's important to recognize that during this pandemic, the culture of sexual harm in BUSD hasn't stopped and students were continuing and are continuing to experience sexual violence. And many, for the first time in about a year and a half, are now forced to be in schools with those who have committed harm against them. And the reality is that it's, there's not been any increase in resources for students surrounding that since they left school. And so I think because of that, students are experiencing a lot of issues surrounding these things and also not a lot of resources that they're being presented with despite the support that was voiced for them by the district during the walkouts one year and seven months ago. Um, and so I, I know Ms. Levinson mentioned the Coaching Boys Into Men contract that is part of the consent calendar, which hasn't been approved yet. But I'd like to voice my public support for that. And I also think it's important that we look into the possibility of K through 12 consent education so that our students are being trained on how to recognize healthy relationships and what consent means from an early age. Because as we can see, the consent education that's currently being offered to students isn't enough. And also that there needs to be a lot more funding and better record-keeping in our Title IX offices. I myself have experienced the consequences of the heavy turnover in administration in Title IX and the mishandling of my personal cases as a result of that. And I think that it's very clear that the district hasn't been doing enough to support Title IX in the work that they're doing. And I'd just like to recommend that while it's important to focus on COVID and the pandemic, it's also, we want to truly ensure students' safe learning environments. This is something we need to be focusing on.
Thank you, Director Muscarino Swan. Director Babett, do you want to go next?
Sure, thank you so much. And good evening to everyone. Thank you for coming out before and sharing your concerns. I really appreciate Latinos Need Us Day Berkeley really highlighting our need to focus on addressing the learning loss and closing our achievement gap. And I want to thank the teacher who spoke about the retreats they missed. It's so funny that my student, my daughter, who was on her way to college, we were just talking about how she never got to go on those retreats that she looked so forward to. So I completely understand that concern and impact on the students. I also want to highly say that I am in favor of full-time substitute teachers. I believe that they become a part of the community when they are at the school. And I remember substitute teachers that would come out to board meetings and help us with, as parent advocates to, to really help meet the needs of our students. So I think that is very important, and I'm looking forward to that funding allocation that we will also be hopefully approving this evening. And then with regards to sexual harassment and sexual harm, I fully support fully funding the training. I appreciate the students for coming out and the parents and all the advocates who have spent so many years to, to really keep this at the forefront and would like to see us make sure that we develop an actionable plan to improve our environment at Berkeley High School in particular and how we're going to roll that down to our middle schools so that hopefully by the time they get to high school, they're more prepared for that appropriate behavior we'd like to see. Saw a movie this weekend called Promising, A Promising Woman. Highly recommend for people to watch that movie because it will illuminate for many some of the stereotypes and misconceptions that keep sexual harassment alive in our environment. Last but not least, I really echo Director Sinai's comments. I really liked that idea about involving our students and AMPS. And as she was speaking, I thought about CAS and our CTE careers and how maybe they could help in developing an app so that would help with our contact tracing as well. And then I look forward to reading Ty Alfred's blog. That's news to me. So I will definitely be checking that out.
You're in for a treat, Director Babett. Thank you. Director Vasidov.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your public comments tonight. I also just wanted to express my deep appreciation for our students who came out and talked about, you know, some really traumatic experiences. And I, I don't think that's very easy to do in a public forum, and I thank you so much for being brave and for coming out tonight. Please know that, you know, your testimony really stayed with me. And I agree, we can do more. We can always do more. I'm glad to see that, you know, today we have some consent education for our athletics department and, and the contract for Coaching Boys Into Men on the agenda tonight, but there's always more that we can do, right? And so I really appreciate the comments of my colleague, Ms. Muscarino Swan, and also Director Babett, just to say like, hey, there's always more that we can do. And, and please know that, that I really take your comments to heart. I also just really wanted to thank our educators. Since our last meeting, we've launched our testing program and I was able to go to Malcolm X into Cragmont to observe it, to see it in action, to see our principals and just, you know, our nurses and all the hands on deck that took to test students very quickly, very efficiently, and to make sure that, you know, our testers had all of their consent information ready to go. Our principals did a great job reaching out to families, making sure that they were able to get a high percentage of consents in. And so I got to see, see the operation and was really impressed by what we've done to keep our students safe. I have to say that, you know, as part of my job, I get to talk to districts all over the state about testing programs. And many districts are struggling with modified quarantine. Many districts just don't have the bandwidth to do the work that we're doing and are sending lots of students home for 10 days. And I'm really proud of, of the fact that we got started early. I'm proud of the fact that, you know, we organized this huge operation, the hours and hours that our staff are spending on the weekend just to make sure that we're ready, you know, for that next testing day. It's a huge operation. And I just want to reiterate to the community that there's a lot behind the curtain. I think that was the title of the superintendent's most recent email to the community. But that was really important for our community to see all of the logistical work that goes into making sure that our students are able to stay in class. And so I'm also a fan of President Alper's blog post and Twitter post. Thank you for that, President Alper. And if you haven't seen it, CSBA also has an article about it too. So I think it's really important because a lot of this work feels really heavy and feels very unsustainable for a lot of districts. And, you know, we're pulling it off, but if you see, you know, if you ever run into a woman named Winburne on our campuses who's kind of leading the testing program or, you know, there's a lot of invisible Now there's a lot of invisible heroes in these operations. And if you ever run into a nurse, you know, at your child's school. Or any, you know, anyone that's, that's taking part in our testing program, please say thanks if you can, because it's a lot and they're putting in a lot of time that's behind the curtain. A lot of us don't get to see. I also want to, you know, reiterate some of the comments that I like, uh, Director Babbitt's idea of an app for our students for contact tracing. I thought that was really cool. And also, um, you know, Director Sina, I said, our peers are, are the best motivators for other peers, right? And so I think a public health campaign with our high school students would be phenomenal. Very much in support of that, would love, would love to see that. And just hearing our students, our students are amazing. And I know, um, would be great ambassadors into keeping their classmates safe, like. I also want field trips and I also want, you know, a lot of these activities where we can congregate, but to do that, we need to make sure our communities are vaccinated and we need to make sure that we're as safe as possible. And so. I would love to see, you know, what comes, what comes out of these different ideas and how we can bring them to fruition with our students. I lastly want to just remind the public that I have office hours this Sunday from nine to 10:30 at Espresso Roma Cafe. And I really want to hear just, you know, from everyone, from students, from parents, from educators. You know, from, from anyone in our district, just how it's been going, how have these first couple of weeks felt? I know it felt like we were going to. Just flip a switch, but there's a lot that goes into being in person right now in the times of the Delta variant. So I'd love to hear from you. If you can't make it to office hours, please email me. I, you know, I always want to, to hear from people in our community. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Director Vasidov. Vice President Brown.
Thank you, President Alper. President Alper always lets me go last because he likes for me to sound like a, a broken record. So. In an effort to not sound like a broken record, I just want to say good evening, everyone, and thank you all. So much for coming out, especially to our students who have the courage. To tell their friend's story and to also tell their own personal story. Thank you so much. For, for being here this evening. Thank you. For speaking your truth and also thank you for pushing us to. Elevate our education for our students and pushing us to be better, to serve our students better. And also to your advocates and your allies and the persons of adult educators. Thank you. For standing with our students. Thank you for also pushing on us to do better. We, we appreciate you and. Also appreciate your partnership and making sure that our schools are a safe space for all of our students. Um, and that it's actually a reality, not just something that we are saying. Um, and also to Student Director Muscatania Swan, thank you so much for sharing your, your story as well. And for your bravery in doing that tonight. Um, I want to echo everything that everyone has said, but I said, like, I wasn't going to sound like a broken record. So I'll just say ditto. To what all my, um, school board director colleagues have said. And also since we will not. Be here next week for the opening. Week of Latinx Heritage Month. I want to say happy Latinx Heritage Month kickoff. Starting next week on the fifteenth to. All of our Latinx families, um, all of our Latinx stakeholders. And supporters have a wonderful month and I can't wait to see. All of the activities that are being done district-wide to celebrate. President Alper, back to you.
Thank you, Vice President Brown. Dr. Stevens, your turn.
Thank you very much, President Alper. And good evening to, to everybody, including my, um, my governance team colleagues. Last Friday, I sent out a letter, Director Vasu Dev referenced it. It was, uh, we, we called it Behind the Curtain. We just intended to tell the story of an. Folks here in BUSD who would not normally be named in a letter to our community. Folks who have been working very, very hard with the really singular pursuit of keeping schools open. And making sure that all of our school, uh, students have an uninterrupted learning experience. I was really pleased to call out the transportation team or technology team, folks who are making it happen with student testing and contact tracing. Um, and also sort of mentioned in that letter that there are hundreds of more stories like this. My colleagues who appear on the dais this evening have also been working very hard. Uh, and then every single school campus in Berkeley, um, you can count on employees having really sort of spent a lot of fuel. To be able to open schools and, and keep them open. Director Vasu Dev's comment that everybody's working harder to accomplish the same goal this year is really true. That it's just that much more work right now to be able to sustain, uh, open schools and keep. Keep all of our students with us. This evening's meeting is important. I wanted, so, so on the topic of that letter, I apologize. So we got about a hundred responses back to that letter. Probably by far the most responses that I've had to any, um, community piece. And to everybody who wrote, um, just to sort of add their cheer and their encouragement. Behind mine, I really do appreciate that sort of expression of solidarity. We're assembling all of those comments. We'd like to get them out to our staff, but really want you to know if you did take the time to write. Or read that piece that we very much appreciate your, your sort of sentiment of unity at this moment. This evening is a, an important board meeting in the sense that. We will be doing what I consider to be a fairly extraordinary act, and that is going to the board very early. In our, our academic year to ask for more money. It was only just a few meetings ago when we were together in June, when we approved the budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Uh, and that was before we had heard of the Delta variant. Uh, and since August first, roughly, uh, we've all been thrown back on our heels. We, the state, the country. Uh, and so this evening, uh, we put together a package of additional requests. That enable us to invest more deeply in the practice of contact tracing, uh, in testing practices. All again, with that singular goal of being able to keep our students on campus and minimize disruptions to students' learning experiences. Um, I know that the course that we have charted here in BUSD is not unique, but puts us in a fairly rare company among districts. Uh, that we're trying to take full advantage of the modified quarantine guidelines published by the state over the summer. To keep our students in school and we're doing that by offering testing in instances where students are identified as close contacts. To be able to do that requires a lot of resources, uh, and the fact that we have now expended our COVID funds and are dipping into strategic district reserves. To be able to fund these additional expenses, I think says a lot about our commitment. To keeping students in school. So, um, uh, over the course of several presentations, including the one led by Associate Superintendent Aurelio and then. Subsequent presentation by Assistant Superintendent Follinsby. You'll hear some various, uh, uh, elements of this overall strategy to keep our schools open. It is true, as President Alper wrote in his recent blog piece, um, that this effort sustaining this effort by school districts is going to require. Greater funding from the state of California. Uh, and greater team play, I think overall by the multiple agencies, their task was supporting our young people through what is now this next phase of the pandemic. So if there's a political point, uh, to tonight's, um, set of presentations, it really is that, this is a moment. To call for increased resources to really stand behind your public school district. Uh, and ask what we can do together to make sure that we stay open, uh, in the face of these ongoing challenges. So my thanks for everybody's hard work for these presentations, uh, and for the support that we continue to receive from this board and our community as we work our way through this next set of challenges.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. All right, um, now we will move to approving the consent counters. Their. Motion to approve the consent counter. With, with, this is mine. Pulling out item eleven point four, which we'll vote on in a second, and we're moving altogether eleven point two and eleven point two two. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Vice President Brown, second.
A second.
Second by Director Vasidov, Ms. Chires.
Student Director Muscatania Swan.
Yes.
Director Vasidov.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Sina.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And now we're going to do, just to, um, not forget it, item eleven point four. Director Sina is recusing herself. Um, is there a motion to approve Director, I mean, um, item eleven point four? I'll move that one. Is there a second?
I'll take it.
Second by President Brown, Ms. Chires.
Director Muscatania Swan.
Yes.
Director Vasidov.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Uh, Vice President Brown.
Yes.
You always trail off when you get to me. Yes, and Director Sina has recused herself on that one. Okay, item one point four is, is approved. Thank you. Now we'll move to item twelve point one, which is their first discussion item for thirty minutes, um, school opening update. Is this, um?
Yes, I'm going to, uh, hand the microphone over to our Associate Superintendent Ruben Aurelio.
Great, thank you, Mr. Aurelio.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all. I'm Ruben Aurelio, Associate Superintendent. And this evening I will be presenting with some of my colleagues, Samantha Tobias, Stinos, Trish McDermott. And introducing Lisa Estepin, our Director of Category and Special Projects. So we're here to provide you just an update to our schools as we enter week four. Um, in the presentation this evening, you're, we're going to talk about some general successes. Of course, we'll also speak to some challenges we're facing. We'll give you a final enrollment update. Director Estepin will speak to the EL Master Plan Development Timeline and current LPAC, initial LPAC testing. Then we're going to have an update on health and safety, testing protocols, case response, and then human resources will provide an update on staffing. So I'm going to open this up with, oh. I'm sorry. Vice President Brown, is your hand raised? Should I? Stop. Oh, we're good. Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
No, no, I just saw a hand pop up. So, okay, I will continue. So a couple of successes, I, um, in my walking or traveling to come some school sites and speaking to some administrators and also speaking with my team. Trying to ask folks what it, what has been successful so far, four weeks into the school year. I did highlight a few things here. We have had virtual open house. Those were successful. The K eight schools. We are doing our COVID testing. These are just some early statistics on how many students have tested and staff that have tested. There is curriculum around social machine learning that is underway. And of course, we're doing everything possible to keep our lunchtime, this especially at the elementary. Levels in grade alike groups to limit the, the need for additional contact tracing. Um, in speaking with Principal Ray Goza at the high school, um, and asking him about success, and this is. Four bullet pointed items that I listed. I could have listed even more. He had a lot of wonderful things to say about what's been great about starting. The school year with all, all the students, but the fact that we have school open for thirty-two hundred plus students on the campus. And that we've had that successful return of two hundred plus staff members has been tremendous. Did share that their intervention and tutorials are up and running. They are doing virtual college tours for students who are adapting to our new normal. And of course, everything, all the efforts that we're putting into making sure our students, who are athletes, are able to compete on a weekly basis. From my team specifically, um, some information around special education. There's a lot of work that we are doing, ensuring that. We're providing education-related health services to our students, providing professional development to sites. We are working in conjunction with the FABAS Core Coordinator to provide universal design for learning, additional professional development there. As well as full inclusion discussions. This is part of the launch for new teachers and new staff, making sure that. Um, our new BUSD members know that we are a full inclusion district. Our Brea Department, which is our research and assessment, uh, department, has a new director this year. We've still Brown and she's been. Going around and meeting with principals, doing the one-on-one time, getting to learn what are the needs of our sites around data. And actually earlier this morning, at our principal's meeting, she had led her first session with K principals around our data needs. Speak about assessment, ensuring that we're not only listening to our, our leadership, um, and being supportive around those needs. You've, you've heard some of this, um, already, which is our biggest, probably single biggest challenge right now is a staffing challenge in a district. Um, and you, I've listed just some examples of what those challenges can be and are. You've just approved the contract that's going to support, uh, actually our response to one of those staffing challenges, which is our after-school, before and after-school programming. Prior we, to this approval of this contract, we still had about two hundred fifty students on the waitlist. And so by contracting this, what's with learning temporary staffing, we should be able to bring that list of waitlist students down. We are reopening our volunteer policy and allowing volunteers to come on campus and we're partnering with Berkeley Public Schools Fund to help support that work. We met with principals this morning, K eight, and shared the process with them. And there will be communicating out to sites this week. What that process will look like. And we know that that's going to help us have additional adults and highs on campus. When it comes to things like supervision and also supporting COVID testing. We've learned that there are bottlenecks in the process. And so we're finding ways to add adults to support that work. Moving on to an enrollment update, these are the most current numbers. I've shared this similar slide with you all as we've presented before. And you can see that we are slightly short of our projected goal. We're at ninety-eight percent of that projected goal. It is important to note that this number does not impact us, our funding for this year. We're still held harmless back to the nineteen-twenty levels. However, we have to anticipate potentially what they're calling the budgetary cliff. At the end of this year, maybe it's the subsequent years. So we are making adjustments. Uh, currently the largest impacted. Group is at the high school. We are meeting with, uh, Principal Ricoza. We're meeting with. Director Kathy Fleming, and we're looking at potentially adding additional FTE to make sure that we're meeting the contractual requirements. For our average class sizes for the high school. They had a significant number of additional high school students show up this year, which is wonderful to have that problem, but we're working to address that. Similarly, with lower numbers at the elementary school, at this point in the year, we don't disrupt those classes. We're not going to be consolidating classes to adjust for those numbers. We just. Go with the current class sizes we have. I wanted to continue to provide you updates on the independent study programming and enrollment. This chart you've seen before, it has been updated with more current numbers. Uh, what we are seeing is sort of a plateauing of this enrollment. Uh, the. Interest in the orientations have really decreased in this past week. The orientation had maybe four attendees. Total. And so we're seeing a decrease. We do have a posted position for sixth grade. That is where the need is at this point. So if we are able to hire for that position, we will add. At that grade level. The interesting component about that is that's sort of the last unvaccinated age group. And so that's where we're seeing a increase, um, in interest at that grade level. So I'd like to introduce Lisa Estepin. I think you're on. I can't see everyone. And she's going to, uh, present the next three slides.
Thank you, everyone. Um, so I'm going to talk about the Berkeley multilingual, my multilingual language learner master plan. What I have here is a timeline. So at a previous meeting, um, the Kabe contract was approved. We are working in conjunction with Kabe to get the master plan off the ground. And so what I'm sharing with you now are just some simple timelines that we have, and I'll go a little bit more in depth with all of them. Um, the first goal is the project launch. That's where we're in right now. And what we're doing right now is, um, you know, developing a timeline which you see here. And then on top of that, we're working on scheduling. Tentative dates out for the whole year, as you can see, um, and we're doing more specific dates. And again, these are tentative. Um, once we get. Folks in place, then we're obviously going to be able to solidify those dates. Um, we're also. Starting to identify who, um, is going to be part of the master plan team and, um, members that we're thinking, you know, soliciting, have begun to solicit our members of. All of the unions within our district, um, district and site committee, people, um, you know, parents, um, site, site folks. As well as other committee, um, community organizations and district staff. So that's where we're at right now in regards to the planning. And project launch. Um, the next portion is going to be, um. What we're talking about. Data gathering and focus groups. And so, um, actually, no, I skipped one. I'm talking about project launch. We're thinking about doing the project launch around the end of September or a beginning of October. And the reason why we've, um. Kind of put those dates in place is because we are trying to get all of the planning completed first and get all those folks in line. What the plan is, is we're going to have an initial kickoff meeting with all of the, um, players that we're going to have on this, um, team. And then the plan is also to do something of like, uh, a town hall meeting to kind of like, let, let everybody, um, you know, in on the information that we were planning on doing. You know, have people ask questions, obtain information, um, anything to, to promote what we are actually doing with this multilingual plan. And then the next part is going to be the data gathering and focus groups. And so that's where surveys take place, interviews, um, just obtaining information because. I don't know if everybody knows, but the last time the plan was updated was in twenty thirteen. So things have obviously. I don't know if everybody knows, but the last time the plan was updated was in twenty thirteen. So things have obviously changed since then. And so we obviously want to engage our stakeholders and figure out, you know, what is needed in the plan and what, what do we need to remove? The next portion is building the background. That's where we're going to really go in depth and review what's in the EL master plan. Or it's called the EL master plan now, but it won't be. As well as, you know, talking about the LPAC, the dual language program, and just work on developing the master plan as a whole. That's where the step is right there in the building background and knowledge PD session portion. The last, the next second to last is the multilingual master plan development. That's where the bulk of the heavy lifting of the work is, you can see, it's a really big timeframe from November to June. And during that timeframe, we're going to obviously start the, be developing the plan. We're going to revise as well as get stakeholder feedback. And then on top of that, you know, get the final draft review and then present it to the board. And then the last goal nine in here, project to inspire, is the parent engagement portion. That's actually for the whole year. That's supposed to start in October. And again, it's going to be, you know, people that we're going to solicit from our committees, from, you know, whoever would be interested to participate. It is a year commitment. And there are three modules that are going to be in there, and it's parent driven on topics that are important to them. So I think it should be a really inspirational and positive piece for parent engagement. And the three cohorts are, they call a mastery expert in advanced. So that's that portion. So that's what that's about. The next slide that I'm talking about is, I think someone, I think Ruben talked about the LPAC testing that's going on at the sites. This is updated information as of Friday. And so we have currently a hundred and fifty six students within Berkeley Unified that were testing for initial testing, which means that they are either new to the district or have never been tested and they have been flagged as being English learners. So you can see the breakdown. We have a hundred and fifty six students by school site. This is a slide that I found very, very interesting. And I just feel like it's, it just shows the amazing array of languages that we have at Berkeley to celebrate what we have. And so we have of the hundred and fifty six initial students. This again is not all of our English learners within the district. These are just the one hundred and fifty six students that are new to our district that we are assessing right now. And if you could see, like, I know for a fact that I didn't know where some of these languages came from myself. And, you know, I had to do a little bit of research, but these are the languages within those one hundred and fifty six students that we have that are testing right now, brand new to our district.
Thank you, Director Estepin. I will turn it over now to Trish McDermott.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'll provide a brief update on testing and cases and also our case response team and process. So I think you know that last week we began our surveillance testing. The week prior, we were doing modified testing, modified quarantine testing. So when there was a case, we were showing up. But last week, we rolled out our surveillance testing, and that was elementary school and also sixth graders. Those are students who are not yet vaccinated as well as modified quarantine testing, some staff, and then Berkeley High School athletes. So last week, we were able to test just under thirty nine hundred people. We started about two weeks ago promoting registrations. So parents need to register their students to test. It's a very simple process and that you don't have to upload any information. And you only have to do it one time. So right now it looks like we have about seventy one percent of our students registered. There are some duplicate registrations that we have to remove some. So that's why we have the about, but it's close to seventy one percent. Also, last week, we deployed eleven times our modified quarantine testing unit. So this is a unit that's going to a school after there's been an exposure. And they're testing all of the students who've been exposed. That could be a class, but that also could be a sports team, students on a bus, a before or after school program, or other extracurriculars. And sometimes that modified quarantine testing is actually testing for multiple cases. If there was a school that had two cases the same week, then we would work to schedule that testing on the same day, just to be efficient. In terms of cases and quarantines, last week we had twenty one cases reported. We are tracking cases on a weekly basis from the Saturday to the Friday. So that's from Saturday, the twenty eighth until Friday, September third. Twenty one cases is by far the highest number of cases that we've seen since the pandemic began in any given week. As of today, we have four hundred and twenty three students on a modified quarantine and twelve students on a home quarantine. And we're now able, because we are tracking quarantine in Infinite Campus, to run a report on a daily basis to give us this count. And this information is also really helpful at school sites so that principals and other staff can be aware of which students are on which type of quarantine. Just to speak briefly to our response team, this is the team that is working seven days now, and they are working both days and evenings. And that's largely because there are public health implications relative to moving very quickly when we learn that there has been a case on a campus or in one of our district facilities. And so we really have to, by nature of that requirement, have a team available seven days a week. And we are often responding to cases over the weekends, including holiday weekends and at night as well. So we are, we have a defined structure for this team, which is some sponsors who are cabinet members. Sponsors are providing strategic advice and insight, helping with sometimes very complex problem solving. Almost every case comes with its own unique issues. That could be, you know, a student on quarantine who's already on quarantine because there were two exposures in, you know, either his or her class or maybe class and some other after-school program. And it's complicated to think, think this through, and we have to get it right. So we're also looking at resources, the cabinet members who are helping, and just providing overall guidance. And we now have a project manager who is really hands-on in overseeing the entire contact tracing process. It's a very complicated process. I was trying to figure out the number of steps. I, I think I hit eleven. But each one of those steps has many sort of substeps related to it. And so the contact tracing manager is also connecting with public health when we need, we need input or advice around something that's, you know, a little bit out of the box in terms of what we typically deal with. Working with the cabinet members, just to make sure that the team has the resources and the guidance that they need. And then providing oversight to a team that includes contact tracers and then also contract tracers who are providing data. So there's a lot of data support to every single case. So that's the contact tracer might be determining, talking to the case and determining when they were on campus, what days, where they were, who outside of maybe their class and the bus or an after-school program or a sports event, they might also have had close contact with. And then our data support people have to download all of that data, format it so it can go into the student portal for outbreak, outbreak tracing, which is part of the public health requirement for their contact tracing. Make sure that the data is in a form that we can actually do outreach to the families and or staff members who are close contacts. Contact tracers are doing a variety of things as well, including working with the project manager to determine quarantine dates or return to campus dates for students who are in isolation or for students who are actually are a case. So and then this team is working together. They are coordinating testing. So when we have a case where we have to do modified quarantine testing, we have very particular days that we have to do that testing on. And so this team has to work together with Win and our testing team to make sure that we can actually deploy those testing technicians on time and on schedule to help those students stay in school and then also to shorten their quarantine if that opportunity exists. So we are very thrilled to start having some support for this process. It is a grueling, complicated process. Everyone has been working a lot of hours, nights and weekends to make this happen. And we're confident that with this level of support, we can meet the public health objectives relative to a case and also keep students in school after an exposure.
And then finally.
McDermott, I just want to just get a time check. We have ten more minutes on this item and want to leave time for questions.
Okay, I'll be really fast on this one. And just finally, we updated the dashboard. I think most of you know about the case dashboard to include other metrics. I invite everyone to visit the dashboard. Most of the information I spoke to on the previous slide is now available to the community on the dashboard. That's it for me.
I think closing us out is Samantha Tobias Espinoza.
Hello. So I'm here to share our vaccination rate. As some people may be aware, the governor has put out a statewide mandate that school employees are either vaccinated or testing weekly, and that needs to be implemented by our district by October fifteenth. So we started on August twenty sixth contacting the employees that we were unable to find their vaccination data and asking them to help us. We did receive a lot of information from our employees, and we've been able to lower the amount of unvaccinated employees, increasing our rate to rounding up eighty six percent. And then we are planning on rolling out our mandatory employee testing starting next week. And we will be having between next week and October fifteenth, a warning and sort of establishing the process time period to work out all the kinks before October fifteenth. So to help our staff to get used to the new system. And that's it.
It's all.
Great. Thank you all so much. That's a lot of information in a short amount of time and represents a lot of work that we're really grateful for. And I'll just start by, I want to echo what Director Vassidav said, I think in her board comments, just about not taking for granted, you know, what has gone into our ability to keep kids in school that, I think you mentioned, Ms. McDermott, that we have right now something like four hundred and fifty students on modified quarantine. And Dr. Stevens said this in one of his messages, but that's hundreds of students who would be at home and in other districts in the state probably would be home if it weren't for this massive testing and contact tracing operation that, as Director Sinai said, is not at all within the not all what any of us signed up for when we got into, you know, doing public education in our various roles. And, and yet that's where we find ourselves. So I, I just want to echo what that Director Vassidav sort of encouragement that we not take it for granted, that we really understand how much, how expensive it is, how time consuming it is, and how critical it is under this current regime and given where we are in the pandemic to keeping students in school. We wish we didn't have to do it. We wish you didn't have to spend the money, but that's where we are. And, and, and we desperately need help from the state to continue doing it. And for other districts that aren't in the same position we are, who didn't have their act together as quickly as we did, for them to be able to keep their students in school as well is so critical. Because we know that we're, we're in this way, an outlier in a good way, like we're doing what, what a lot of districts are not able to do. And we know that thousands of kids across the state are home on quarantine because their districts don't have the resources or infrastructure to do the kind of testing and contact tracing operation that Ms. McDermott described. So I just really want to appreciate it. But I have one question, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Dr. Stevens, if you could just address the comment that was raised in the public comment about, you know, why isn't this, why is even this our responsibility? Why isn't this the city? Maybe you can just explain the answer to that and then also talk about the ways in which, you know, we are working with the city and getting assistance from them.
Yep. Yeah, really broadly, the framework for public health in schools this year is established by the state, not the city of Berkeley. That's the California Department of Public Health. Those guidelines were revised in July. And in general, they assign responsibilities like the ones we've talked about tonight, testing, contact tracing and others to school districts. We here in Berkeley, we're very lucky that we've got our own local health jurisdiction. We're in contact with them on a weekly and sometimes daily basis. And we know that our city partners are standing by at the point that we bring on board these new team members and we find ourselves still in need of help. So just generally, the framework is a state framework. It assigns lots of responsibilities to the district, but the city has been a good partner so far. And I know is very interested to learn from us what we think we need next, very specifically.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Stevens. Director Babett, then Sinai, then Vassidav.
Thank you so much for that presentation and for all of the details. And I completely agree with our sentiments of appreciation for all the hard work to keep our schools open. A few questions that I have on a few slides throughout the presentation. One in the challenges to reopening, I was curious as to what's happened with our transportation for our after-school programs. I, I heard different reports around that. So I was hoping if you could update us on exactly what's happening there. And then with the EL master plan, thank you so much for those details and that timeline and really allowing us to, to be a part of the phasing and the planning and learning and really want to make sure that our community partners are definitely engaged in this process and supporting the way that is laid out. That would be helpful for us to know. And then if there's any update on our student vaccination rates. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director. So.
Pauline, do you want to, can you speak to the transportation question?
Um, yeah, I can, I could take that on. Sure. So we are offering transportation to our after-school programs, not at the level that we were pre-pandemic. But we're working on various routes. Sometimes we can't offer transportation if it's outside of the, if it's within the one point five mile radius. But we are still offering transportation to our after-school programs, both our non-BUSD programs and our BUSD programs. Was there another question?
And one, we, we're definitely going to, Director Babett, I'm trying to recall the question, the EL master plan work, you're definitely going to try to involve all the stakeholders necessary. And I think your third question specifically was.
Student vaccination rate?
Student vaccination rates, yes. Who has that data handy?
Ms. McDermott, do we?
So I, I think I saw something. Honestly, I just don't have it on the tip of my tongue. I know that we recently took some subgroups. For instance, we looked at athletes. And we looked at vaccination rates among athletes. I think, I, I think it was seventy nine percent. But I, I don't, I don't have a number district wide yet. I do know that there are some discrepancies in the CARES database that we're using to actually determine vaccinations. For instance, we see students with their second vaccine recorded in the database, but not their first vaccine. And so I know there's an effort now underway to get vaccination cards from those students to find other ways to actually verify. So we probably don't have a full count yet and maybe something closer to an estimate.
And just, and just to follow up, we did an initial upload of information right before school started around student vaccinations, but then the subsequent uploads, I don't know if it's every two to three weeks, but we're doing a, a cycle to review and go back to cares and see if we can find additional vaccinated students.
Okay, Director Sinai.
Thank you for a lot of really good information. I appreciate starting off with our educational successes. That there's actually, I want people to know how much work is going on. That's not just related to COVID. So I really applaud and thank you for, for those updates. And I also want to express appreciation to both the administration as well as to BCC for troubleshooting our staffing issues for the before and after-school programs. It's a huge issue to have, you know, two to three hundred students who are still waiting for after-school spaces and knowing the challenge that has for families. So I appreciate BCC stepping up and being able to, to do the temporary contract with Sports for Learning and being able to move that forward. I do have, I do have some COVID questions, Ms. McDermott. So I, and I'll just ask them if that's okay. It's probably easier. One is, I'm curious how we're doing with our testing supply because I know of the statewide shortage. And, you know, are we, are we managing that? And how do we think we're dealing with that? I have a, do you want to go ahead and answer that?
Director Sinai, hold on. Can you just, why don't you ask all the questions and then we'll, then we'll get the answers. Is that all right?
Sure. Okay. Around the tracking of the positive cases. Do you track how many of those are self-reported and how many of those are positive based on our surveillance testing? Other question. And then I saw on the pie chart, this is for, I think, Assistant Superintendent Tobias Escudero, that subs aren't included in the pie chart. But what's the policy around testing or vaccination before a sub can step foot on our campuses? So those were my specific questions. Thanks.
So Ms. McDermott?
Yeah, I can start. So in terms of tracking testing, yes, we are able to determine if a case is self-reported or parent-reported, or if it came from surveillance testing. So to date, our surveillance testing has produced four positive results. So this is an instance where we're actually finding out first, the parent essentially is getting notified at the same time. But so we can move very quickly. Those students are removed from school immediately. They're isolated, we talk to them. We actually, in that scenario, retest them with a rapid test, and then we PCR test them as well, just for a confirmation. And then.
So the parent, they tested outside of the school if the parent notified you of a positive test?
That's correct, yes.
And then the testing supply?
Yes, so we currently have something like 2100, 2200 tests, maybe a little bit fewer, I think, because we've been testing this week. Those are almost all the antigen tests, that's the rapid test. We're putting in a subsequent order for both PCR tests and the rapid antigen test, largely because we've been told we're more likely to receive larger shipments of the PCR test, and the testing technicians have the ability to move back and forth between either test. There's benefits to both, PCRs are considered to be more accurate, but the antigen test gives us an immediate result.
And Ms. McDermott, if I can, I think the supply is actually 22,000, not 2200.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's what I meant.
Okay. And the policy for testing subs?
We are still working on developing a practice for our subs and getting that implemented before October 15th. So we have a huge number of subs who are in our system who are not actually active and working. So we're trying to clean up the list first, and then to really pursue who is not, who is considered unvaccinated on that list, and contacting those individuals to either get their records, if they have them, or to make sure that they do test within our system.
Okay.
It's a more difficult group because it's a large group that we don't always have contact with very often.
But the policy applies, is going to apply to them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you so much, President Albert. I just wanted to echo all the sentiments of gratitude from my peers, to the staff for, you know, our testing program and our contact tracing program, and just for keeping our children in schools. Thank you so much, because I know that that's a lot of work. And my questions, I have questions about the master plan, and just a comment about transportation, since Director Babett brought it up. For transportation, I realized that there were some last-minute changes to programs that we had, you know, been able to serve before, like the JCC at Cragmont, for example. And my general comment is that when there are changes, that parents need more than two weeks' notice. And I think that that's what happened this fall, and rightly so. We had a lot of parents that wrote to us and expressed concern. So I hope that for, you know, subsequent years, if there are changes in the transportation route, that those are announced, as parents are making decisions on which after-school program to choose, because that impacts where their children are going. And you know, a lot of shuffling around. And so I would urge our transportation department to be a bit more proactive in communicating those kind of changes. And then in terms of the master plan, my comments about the different focus groups, I really liked that slide with the different focus groups for our educators. And for those, I just wanted to make sure that we were doing targeted outreach to the multilingual program at the high school, the newcomer program at King, and also to our TWI educators. And then same for the parent engagement portion, right? That, you know, it's kind of an open call. I think, you know, obviously, we're all our ELAX, we're going to, you know, recruit from there, that's the natural source, but also to do, you know, some targeted outreach, like, you know, phone calls, you know, whatever we can do, some deep engagement to those parents in our high school multilingual program, in our newcomer program, and in our TWI program. Because I think that's a, it's a population that doesn't respond to a passive email, right? Like, we should call them and just be a little bit proactive in how we reach out to them and make sure that they feel welcome in that space. And it was really beautiful just to see the diversity of all the languages for our students this year that are coming into the district. And, you know, if, if no one has gone to the multilingual program, high school graduation, or visited the newcomer classes at King, it's just so beautiful to see the diversity of our district. And so I really appreciate that slide. Thank you so much for including it.
Thanks so much, Director Vassidav. All right. Thank you so much to all of you for your presentations. We really appreciate it. And we will move now to item 13.1, which is our first action item. Assistant Superintendent Fonsby.
And before Assistant Superintendent Pauline Fonsby starts, Liz, I wonder if you could promote Liz Karam, who is right now, I think, a participant, but we should make her a panelist. And Pauline, I'm going to turn it over to you now. There we go.
Okay, all right, so Liz is now a panelist. Okay, so I'm going to share my screen. Oops, I thought I was going to show my screen. All right, let's try this again. Can you allow me to share my screen, please? Still says it's disabled.
Just a moment, let's follow.
Thank you.
Are you able to share your screen now?
Yeah. So it's taking a while. Okay, so here we go, yeah. So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to, first of all, introduce you to Liz Karam, who's here with me. We're going to be going over the unaudited actials. And a quick note about Liz, she's been with the district six previous and in her recent role as fiscal director, she's been in that role for years. So this evening, we're going to be looking at the unaudited actials, and our focus is usually the unrestricted general fund. And we're looking at how we close the books, looking at what we budgeted, and what we actually, how we actually performed when we closed the books. So tonight, we're asking you to approve unaudited actials, along with again, limit resolution. And this is a resolution that we present at the same time in accordance with state requirements. So first, an overview of the unrestricted general fund. We did meet the 3% state required reserve. Our ending balance exceeded projections by 0.5 million. And we did have $1.1 million assigned, $1 million for LCAP reserve. And speaking of our LCAP, you can see this slide. We look at what we're entitled to over the, over several years in LCAP, what we spent both in LCAP and in carryover. So you could see from 2014, 15 to 2021, we've gotten $32.9 million. And we spent $30.9 million. And that was, we, we had an unspent balance of $2 million. However, of that amount, we spent $749,000. So we have an unspent balance of $1.3 million. And we have designated $1 million for reserve and $276,000 in the carryover. And now I'm going to turn it over to Director Karam for her to take us through the variance report. So let me open that up. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. As Pauline mentioned, we're going to focus on the unrestricted general fund. And we're looking, the variance report looks at the differences between the estimated actials, which are budget, and the actials, which is what we received and spent, and the variances between them. The first thing we can look at is revenue. There was an overall change in revenue of $812,000. That's marked by a letter A, primarily due to reductions in local revenue. And that was primarily from the cooking and gardening program, the decrease in revenue due to unspent balances. Expenses, there was a favorable variance in expenses with unspent balances totaling $1.2 million. You can see that's letter B. The three items where balances were unspent is, one was employee benefits, and that was primarily less than anticipated expenses for stirs and purrs costs. And then we had district-wide unspent balances for discretionary expenditures, which is $1.3 million. And that discretionary expenditures are books and supplies and contracts, contracts, rentals, leases, and repairs. But so the, if you can look at the difference between revenue and expense, the difference is a positive $400,000. So the biggest item was that the expenditures, the unspent money was offset by a reduction in indirect cost. Indirect cost is based on the amounts actually expended. So we spent less, and the general fund received less in indirect costs. Other financing sources and uses, there's the significant variance was in the inter-fund transfers. So the, originally, we anticipated transferring $3.2 million from Fund 20, the Fund for Post-Employment Benefits. We found that it wasn't necessary to fully, to transfer the full amount of 3.2. We transferred 2 million, so we, there was a reduction in the originally anticipated transfer of $1.2 million. The, we, the district receives a large contribution from BSET for class size reduction. They, the transfer was $250,000 more, and that was due to additional, additional expense, actual expenses in teacher costs. The contributions out, the special education contribution budget exceeded actials due to adjustments for prior-year one-time expenses for mental health, carryover for early intervention programs, and unfilled positions. So the, really, the conclusion is that when we close the books, we recognize an increase in fund balance of $500,000. You'll find the explanations that I just went through on the last page of the variance report, which will explain where those, the significant changes were. Thanks, Pauline.
Okay. Thank you, Liz. So we'll then, we have a few more slides to share with you in this presentation, if I can get back to it. Okay. So now we'll take a brief look at our committed reserve. It's a board policy, fondly known as the Josh Daniels policy. And this is where we look at our ending fund balance and determine if we need to increase our reserve for economic uncertainty. And after looking at the requirements and our performance, our transfer from Fund 20 of $2 million impacted what would be our ending fund balance. So it's, it's 2.2 million is what we actually ended up with. And the requirement to increase the 1% is 3.6 million. So in this case, we're not going to, we did not meet the requirement to increase the reserve. And special education, as Director Karam mentioned, in 2021, we actually spent less than we, we had budgeted. And she explained the reasons why in the, when she presented the variance report. So even though in 2021, we spent $24.4 million, it's still $300 more than the year before. And of course, from the trend, you can see that in 1819 and 1920, there was a significant increase of 3 million. And while the increase is not as drastic in 2021, we're nevertheless increasing expenditures, but we also made the maintenance of effort. Okay. And then this is a brief explanation on the GAN limit. And the GAN limit was introduced to limit allowable growth in state and local government spending. We think this may be an issue in 21, 22. It does not impact our funding in 2021, and it's, we'll have to see the impact that it would have in 21, 22. And so we're asking the board to approve this resolution. It's Resolution 21004. So that's our summary of our unaudited actials. We closed pretty well, 0.5 million dollars in excess of projection, our $5 million ending fund balance. So now we're going to turn our attention to the upcoming year and our, and what challenges we have facing us. We are all aware of the funding cliff that, that we've talked about, the ADA drop, or recognizing the, what may be a drop in 22, 23. And as, as Ruben mentioned in his report, we're held harmless to the 19, 20 levels based on the Hold Harmless Clause and the fact that we're funded on the higher of the current or prior year. However, we are still depending on a transfer of Fund 20, and that's, that's showing up the district. But we're still having a structural deficit. So this structural deficit is being aggravated or being further challenged by our persons, there's costs. Even so, even if we have a slight increase in revenue, our expenses are outpacing our revenue and adding to our deficit. We know that we have significant budget cuts needed in our years, and we did the multi-year at the adoption. We knew, we know that 22, 23 will be a year that we have to really take into account our budget reductions. And we will be bringing the first interim on the 31st. And, and the period ends October 31st, and we'll bring it back on December 8th. And of course, we'll be starting to engage our various committees that in the 22, in the 22, 23 budget, we're starting earlier, because we have a lot of work ahead of us in terms of making sure that we have a balanced budget. So I mentioned earlier that I really rely, well, I do, I'm mentioning it now, I rely on Liz and her team. It's definitely a team effort. There were lots of weekend works, lots of late nights. I don't think the team even had a long weekend. They worked every day. So this is an incredible amount of work, and I just want to express my, my thanks and appreciation to Liz and her team. We wouldn't have gotten to this point without them. And I just want them to know we appreciate their hard work. And at this point, we're open for discussions. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen.
Thanks so much, Assistant Superintendent Fonsby and Ms. Karam. Appreciate that presentation, and I will turn it over to Director Sinai for the first comment or question.
Yeah, I thank you so much for this report, and thank you for being available to answer my clarifying questions this afternoon. It, when we look at the half a million dollar net revenue, does that, does this include the COVID dollars, the multi-millions of dollars of COVID money?
No, we're, the focus is unrestricted general fund, and COVID funds are restricted. So it's not, it's not.
Thanks, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Sure.
Director Babett?
And thank you all so much for your hard work on closing the books. I definitely understand those long nights and weekends, and really appreciate that you listed the staff to give them the honor and the credit that is due to them for this tremendous effort. I also want to say I apologize that I missed the audit committee meeting yesterday.
I know.
I was traveling, you know, I would have been there. And then, but I had a question about the special education trend, because I know that we approved more funds for some of the IEP catch-up work to be done over the summer. And just curious, is that included in this spending? Or was that from a different fund? And just curious, is that included in this spending or was that from a different fund? Or can we, is it too late to recapture those since we were under budget in our actual spend?
I think the the summer work would actually show up in in next year's budget, right? So so this they cut off because there are a few days in June, but there are significantly more in in the following fiscal year. We would we would reflect that in information in the following year.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. And then just want to highlight to mainly my board colleagues, my concern about our virtual academy and those expenses and the sustainability of that, given the expected cliff, that that's something that we really need to begin thinking about how we manage long term, if it becomes a long-term need. And that's all for me. Thank you so much. I appreciate the detailed report.
Thanks, Director Babett. Okay, I I had a couple of questions, but I think they're actually more relevant to the next item. So I'll hold on. I will hold off and I don't see anybody else with their hand up. So we need to, we need to approve, we can do this in one motion, I think. Is there a motion to approve the staff request?
I'm of
Okay.
The staff request.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, Director Sinai, Ms. Chires.
Director Marketing, a form. Director Basada.
Yes.
Director Babett.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right. Thank you. And thank you again, Assistant Superintendent Fonsby and Ms. Karam. All right, next we'll move to item 13.2. Is this Dr. Stevens or Assistant Superintendent Fonsby or Mr. Aurelio?
Actually handing the microphone back to Assistant Superintendent Fonsby.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so here I am again. So good evening, everyone. We have heard this evening the importance for us to keep our our students in school. And we're actually putting together the cost of meeting this requirement. And I'll be sharing with you the the list of expenses that we're requesting to be funded from Fund 20 and possibly the use of COVID funds as well. So the transfer from Fund 20, where I think we're estimating it's 2.3 million dollars and we're transferring it from Fund 20, which is our special reserve fund for post-employment benefits. And we have, I have a little bit more information further on in the presentation about this fund. But we also are requesting the use of COVID funds to cover these identified expenses. So we talked about ensuring the health and safety of students and staff as we return to in-person instruction. And also the additional staffing that we're going to need for our students who are in our independent study program. And we also have identified the need for additional subs and also an increase in the subs daily rate. So I have a link here to the expenses, all the expenses. And I also have a general explanation. So I think I'll share my screen with a summary of expenses that we came up with. So we looked at, we looked at the scope of the work that we're we're asking be funded. We casted it out based on information, reaching out to various partners. And we have identified the funding source as being COVID or Fund 20. And the first area that we're thinking of that we're asking for is our testing expense. So we have Winberta, who is our consultant, who is working for us. She's a project lead. She has a contract. And it's interesting to know that we're projecting expenses for the entire year. We don't know how long this Delta variant is going to be around or other variants. So these costs do anticipate us going through the entire year. So Winberta's contract.
Assistant Superintendent Fonsby, if you could just do this without, I know they're on, the names are on here, but I don't think there's any need to to use.
Okay, the project. Okay, because I know we've talked about it. So anyway, the testing team is made up of a project lead and two nurses. And and Vestra, we have to pay for additional testing supply to not supplies, but adjusting additional testing staff from Vestra. We do get did get some staffing from the city, but this is the additional cost to ensure that our students and and students and 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 staff are tested. So that we estimated that cost of $630,000, 210,000 from COVID and 420,000 from our general fund. For contact tracing, we have a person that's assisting us with workflow design for two months. And then we're also looking at a team, two teams for contact tracing. The teams are led by one project manager and each team would have a contract, lead support and a data support. So these are estimates in terms of the tracer, $102,000. The lead support to be determined, we think they will come on a little bit later. So that cost will go down somewhat. And then our contact tracer, these are the costs that we came up with. So total cost $546,000 and we're we're thinking we can use $522,000 from COVID funds and $24,000 from Fund 20. Staffing, we we have identified the need for additional subs, roving subs as well as increasing the sub rate because it's been challenging getting subs staff for subs to do substitute work. So we're we're keeping the rate at 225. We had negotiated with BFT to do that rate for a shorter period. So we're extending that rate to 225 per day. We're also getting additional roving subs. And then to staff independence study, we're looking at six FTE and one FTE at Berkeley High School. So this is a pretty hefty lift, a pretty hefty ask. It's $1.4 million rounded and we're thinking that would come totally from Fund 20. So when we're looking at our COVID-related expenses, there are 2.5 million, 732,000 from COVID and 1.8 million from Fund 20. In our non-COVID related expenses, we're working with ed services on board contracts, including college bond and some other projects, 200,000, we have estimated those to be. We talked about sports for learning, that's $100,000. And even though it's in the non-COVID section and not technically caused by COVID, it is, it does meet the requirement for COVID funding. So we put that on the COVID there. Athletics, we talked about coaching boys into men. That would have to, we're asking for that to be funded by Fund 20, a transfer. And then we have goal development, $60,000. And then we're, we actually have the need for a project manager for IT upgrades and operations. And that that's to be determined, but we're estimating that at $150,000. And then with our informed P12, we want to expand that the workflow. We already have them on board, but we think it's going to cost $24,000 to expand that workflow. So non-COVID costs, 574 with 100,000 coming from COVID and 474 from Fund 20. So in all, our ask is $3 million, 832,000 from COVID and 2.3 million from a transfer from Fund 20. So and again, we have to remember these are costs for the entire year. We may come in a lot. If there's no need to continue this whenever the pandemic is over, you know, we will be adjusting our costs accordingly. And also this will also will also go this route if we don't get additional funding from the state or federal governments for testing or contact tracing for the Delta variant. So let me go back to the presentation. And this is, I went into detail, this is summarizing the detail that I just presented. So and this is again, an overall summary. So we did it twice. But this is covered earlier in this in the presentation. This summary of fund balances is interesting. The last time we met with the board, we had identified an ending fund balance of about $1.1 million. This is after taking into account requests for mental health and other items that the board had requested. And Fund 20, actually, before we close the books, that was at 6.5 million dollars. So with the COVID funds, what has happened since then, we had additional expenses or stipends came in a little higher than we projected and a few other expenses. So that was $268,000, which reduced that beginning balance. And then, of course, we you just heard us present in the variance report that we did not transfer the 2 million, the 3.2 million dollars, we only transferred 2 million. So that helped the fund balance in Fund 20. And then the expenses that I just shared with you, that's listed there in the current expenses. So while that exhausts, pretty much exhausts our COVID funds, it does leave an ending fund balance from Fund 20 of $5.4 million. And just a brief overview of our Fund 20, as we mentioned, it's our reserve for post-employment benefits. So it's for benefits other than our pension. So it's predominantly for our health benefits for retirees. We we brought an item to the board where we actually reduced the rate to 0.9%. I think it was 1.5, I can't remember what it was. But anyway, and the balance is $5.4 million. The link here to Fund 20 just has a lot more information that I previously shared with the board. So again, for board action, we're asking the board to transfer $2.3 million from Fund 20 and using .8 million dollars of COVID funds for these expenses we have identified, which we believe are necessary and needed to keep our schools opened and to keep our staff and students safe. So at this point, we can, I'm opening it up for discussion. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen.
Thanks so much, Director Assistant Superintendent Fonsby. I I'll just start and then see what questions my colleagues have. It's a I appreciate, I really appreciate Dr. Stevens, your comments earlier about sort of the extraordinary step you're taking, sort of coming to us early, sort of off the budget cycle to be, I think, transparent about the fact that we're, you know, we're needing to draw from a fund that that we have money in, but is not meant for this purpose to pay for, as Assistant Superintendent Fonsby just said, pay for what we need to keep our schools open and to fund some of our other critical priorities that we want to fund. And, you know, I'm convinced we have to do it, but I'm also, it also, you know, makes me nervous. And and I worry about both depleting Fund 20 too much. We've already, as as you just mentioned, Pauline, you know, reduced the rate that we replenish it at by 0.1%. We're drawing down from it. And it's not just a savings account. It serves the purpose of of providing a cushion for and and security for the benefits that we owe to our employees for post-employment benefits. They're on top of what they get from their pensions that the state provides. So we can't just draw it down forever. I I do recognize that we we drew a lot less of it down than than we had thought we were going to have to. So that does give us a little bit of room. But the other big concern about doing this is just funding. Some of it, like Director Babett mentioned, we don't know whether it will continue on independent study distance learning. We hope that we don't, we're not going to be doing contact tracing next year. But any of the, and this goes for the other one-time, other things we funded with one-time money at the end of last year, anything we're funding with one-time money, we're going to either need to stop funding next year or find something to cut in order to pay for it next year. We can't keep funding positions ongoing position with one-time funds. And I think we all just have to, you know, be honest with ourselves and transparent about that, that either they're pilots and we look at them to see whether they work or not. Or we have to find the money somewhere else to continue them next year. So we're we're looking at cuts for next year. You know, if we do this and already anyway, even if we don't do this. I guess my my question, Dr. Stevens or Assistant Superintendent Fonsby, is it seems like from the last presentation, there may be a just more, a little bit more ending fund balance than we thought there would be. And there may also be, or there is LCAP carryover supplemental funds carryover above the $1 million reserve that we have for LCAP. And I guess my question, I guess really for you, Dr. Stevens, or maybe Assistant Superintendent Aurelio, is does it make sense to view this as an authorization to draw from Fund 20 up to the request of $2.3 million, but not necessarily approving that draw no matter what? So that if there's if there's items, for example, that we're tonight talking about funding out of Fund 20, but actually could be funded out of the LCAP carryover money or the ending fund balance in the general fund, that we would do that first before taking from Fund 20 and so reduce the actual transfer from Fund 20? Does that, does that question make sense?
It does, yes. And I appreciate the thought, President Alper, that there may be, now having closed the books and through the report by Assistant Superintendent Fonsby and Director Karam, we are sitting on, you know, some fund balance at the end of the year. It may be possible for us to redistribute some of these expenses to those fund balances. We wouldn't be prepared this evening to offer a thoughtful way to do that. But I think what you're proposing is that should it be possible that that might be something that staff could do while still being authorized to withdraw to 2.3 from Fund 20?
Yeah, exactly. Like Fund 20 to me is the last resort. It's there and and these are critical expenses, but it is a last resort, or that's how I see it. Director Sinai and then Director Musgraves, swap.
I really appreciate that that suggestion, President Alper, because I think the 247, whatever the
I think it's 270.
Yeah. The LCAP could be a very logical use of funds for the Latinx programming that we're looking at. So there might be some ways to leverage with that. Dr. Stevens or Assistant Superintendent Fonsby, there's a lot of chatter in the community about the $16 million that we got with COVID funding. And why do districts continue to say we need more money? So I I kind of wanted to talk, just kind of a refresher for folks on that a lot of those, a huge portion of the COVID dollars, not only were for COVID mitigations at the beginning of last or during last year, but also to get kids back into school with mitigations as well as socially emotional learning, learning loss interventions and the like. And so I hear a lot of like, well, the district's got millions of dollars. Why, why, why can't they staff up the testing and contact tracing? Could you, could you just talk a little bit about that and why we sound like we're stressed for money?
Sure, I'm happy to. And I may invite Assistant Superintendent Fonsby to contribute to this response. When you think about the sort of long arc of fighting COVID, which is now 20 months and counting, we've been through so many phases of needs from facilities preparation, purchasing PPE, reopening our schools, which require different campus setups, buying outdoor learning environments, new signage. We also invested a lot in that reopening phase of April and May in additional staffing to be able to do cohorting, which gratefully is no longer part of the guidance, but nonetheless was something we had to do to open back up in the spring. All of our summer programming was funded on COVID money as well as school grants. Those restorative restart school grants, which totaled $2 million. Next summer's, next summer's programming is also somewhat enriched by budget set-asides from those COVID dollars. And as well, we use those COVID dollars to try and stabilize our workforce. And we're actually relatively well situated in the workforce. in the workforce compared to some of our Bay, East Bay colleagues, who are experiencing even more severe turnover than we are. So there have been just such a broad variety of needs over the arc of this two years. And those monies, while they seemed really significant, have been spread across multiple needs for a very long time. And this evening, as Assistant Superintendent Fonsby reported, we are now drawing down that balance to zero and starting to dip into our own district funds to be able to continue to meet these ongoing needs.
Thank you for that, Dr. Stevens.
Thank you.
Director Muscarini Swann.
Um, yeah, just touching on what Director Alper mentioned, I'm wondering what your long-term plan is for funding the coaching boys into men concent training athletics.
Well, so these, I, I think President Alper was referring to this. We have launched a number of one-time programs this year, including now this one-time allocation to be able to support coaching boys into men. We will have, as a community, many difficult conversations in front of us over the course of the next year to reprioritize our spending and to make sure that the highest priority items are accommodated in ongoing revenue sources. Coaching boys to men is one of those topics. There's no doubt going to be others. So these discussions about where they eventually live in our budget will now go to our budget committees, our advisory committees, where the good folks who, you know, help us with those decisions are going to begin to wrestle with some of those dilemmas. And then we'll have to figure this out by the time we're building the budget in the spring and ultimately approve it in June.
Okay.
Thanks to Director Babbitt and Director.
And yes, I just wanted to acknowledge kind of what, also echoing what Director Sinai is saying, that a summary kind of chart of all of the things that we've done, spent our money on, would be helpful. You know, it's hard to keep up with all these different buckets. And I definitely want to echo using our unreserved funds or the, the monies that we didn't spend instead of our reserve. I think it's very wise and we are in a better position because we've had these savings to draw into. And yes, it's raining, but let's not create a war if we don't have to. And thank you all for the hard work and the critical thinking that's gone into this.
Thanks, Director Babbitt. Director Basad.
Ah, yeah, I also really appreciate all my board members, colleagues, and also want to echo what President Alper said, that we should really be careful about funding positions with one-time money, knowing what's ahead of us. And so, thank you very much for, for this presentation and for slaying out all the, all the various expenses in a very thoughtful way. And I agree that I think for the public, it is helpful to have like a summary of all our COVID expenses, especially as they keep coming and hopefully, right, like we won't have to use this for the whole year. Hopefully, we'll be able to vaccinate our students earlier and we'll be able to reduce some of these costs before the end of the year. So fingers crossed for that. My question is, I liked the suggestion that Director Sinai floated around about some of the board contracts for like college-bound PICA Latino family literacy, potentially going into the LCAP. But is, and this is more of a question for, for you, Assistant Superintendent Aurelio, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but if it's something that serves beyond just like English language learners, can that come out of the LCAP? Like if it's, if it's programming for all Latinx students or does it have to, like, you know, I'm just concerned that it's, because a lot of that program isn't only for English language learners or underprivileged students.
You would definitely have to look a little closer into that. Director Esteban is not a panelist right now, but she probably would give you the best answer to that question. But we can definitely research what we can, and, and her and I are looking to all carryover, including some by title dollars and where we can fund some of these projects as well, specifically for targeted students. So we are, we're looking and turning over every rock possible to make sure we have the dollars to bring these services to our students.
Got it. So once, if we approve, right, tonight, this, this transfer, and if, if this gets moved around in the back, and it means that we approve kind of that bucket of work, but on the backend, the funding source can change potentially.
Correct, and, and we, we are working to get those contracts brought forward, some of the ones you've mentioned earlier. And so this will just ensure that there is that bucket of dollars available that won't keep us from keeping things brought forward.
Great, thank you.
Can I just add to Director Basad's question with a response that, you know, in our LCAP plan, we've targeted our funds to reach our marginalized communities. So our African-American communities are named, our Latinx communities are named, our special ed communities are named. So while we do realize that those are the sources of how our funding comes in, our ultimate goal is to make sure that we use those funds to actually help close the achievement gap and really serve our marginalized populations better. So in that sense, we can use our LCAP funds for these types of purposes. Thanks.
Yeah, great. I, I realized that the, the actual request in the, in the item is for a transfer not to exceed 2.3 million dollars. So that's actually what I was talking about anyways, the language is already there, not to exceed. So, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the staff request as it's written in the, in the board item. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Director Basad. Ms. Charis.
Director Marketing at Swan. Director Basad.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes, all right. We're, we're hurtling towards the end of the meeting. So if, if you're, if you're here to give public comment at the end of the meeting, now is the time to raise your hand. Item 13.3 is a motion, these are two technical things we need to do. We had the public hearing last week, last meeting to approve the LCAP plans, last three-year LCAP plan and the budget for this current year. So first we'll do the LCAP, item 13.3, there a motion to approve the local control and accountability plan?
So moved.
Motion by Vice President Brown. Second by Director Sinai, Ms. Charis.
Director Muscarini Swann. Yes. Director Basad.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes, and moving to item 13.4, to approve the adopted budget for 2021, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the budget?
The most.
Motion by Director, Vice President Brown.
I'll second.
Second by Director Basad. Ms. Charis.
Director Muscarini Swann. Yes. Director Basad.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
Yes, all right. Now is an opportunity for public comment, if there's anybody here for public comment, now send raise your hand. All right. I will adjourn the meeting at 9:18. Thank you all.
Thank you, President Alper.
Have a good night.